One, two, three. Yeah, my speakers are working okay. I hear my...
Sandy, right now Kevin Roach, Lori Olson, I gave her a call and she thinks Kevin Roach can unlock the door remotely, and it'll be unlocked until 7:30.
What's that? So... We want his picture. Yeah, he can hear us. For some reason, we're not getting his audio. There we go. Fifteen seconds. I don't even hear you on my phone anymore. That might work. Yeah, try talking to me through the phone, because I got a speaker. I got a microphone on my phone. Through the... Through the phone is the only way we're gonna be able to hear you.
All right, I'm talking through my phone.
And I'm not even hearing you through my phone either.
Are you hearing me at all right now?
Check. One, two. Okay, go ahead and talk through your phone.
Hey, Dave. Can you hear me?
Yep, keep going.
This is all just my phone right now.
That's just weird. I don't know. Check. One, two. I'm gonna try rebooting my end.
Kristy. Do you want to run us through the... The drill? We can do the drill now before Izzy's booting, or in terms of the... Got it, got it.
Yes.
Oh. Never mind.
Okay, go ahead and talk, Kyle.
This is on my phone. Test, test, test.
Keep going.
Um, how's everybody doing?
You hear him? Well, I've got my phone here. But I don't know. I'm not gonna hear him. Yeah. I just did that. I put my phone on mic, everything. Nothing's coming through at all.
Computer check. One, two, three.
Keep going. So it's coming through your computer, but not my computer. But it comes through your computer, but it's not coming into my system. And it did just fine. Uh, yeah. As we tried, still don't hear him. Where's your speaker at? It is. I plugged it in. That's the thing. Plugged it in. Okay, go ahead and talk, Kyle. In the air, your ear.
Test, computer. One, two, three.
Know where your speaker is. Staff. What turn? Staff, what? That's what I've been trying to do with my phone. It doesn't pick them up. But we can try it. Try it through the phone. Yep.
And so, he doesn't need to be on Zoom. We can shut this off.
Yep. Other than the fact that we just won't see him. We're gonna try having you call somebody else. Oh, see, now I don't hear him at my phone at all. Are you on the phone?
I'm on mute.
Okay.
I'm back on the phone. What do you want me to do?
Oh, here we go. Hold on. Okay, let's try talking. Try talking again.
Oh, the computer on my phone.
On your phone. There we go. Okay, now I got you.
Cool. All right. So the plan will just be I'll just talk through my phone. That'll be great.
Yep, yep. No, because I still need his video. I still want his video. Okay, we're good.
I'll just keep this phone for call connector.
Kyle, can you say... Can you count to five?
Say that again. What do you need me to do?
You're good, thanks.
Welcome to the City Council Candidates Forum. Will everyone please stand and join me in signing the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible,
The Prior Lake Chamber of Commerce is sponsoring this forum. I'm Kristy McCoy, and I'm Chair of the Prior Lake Chamber of Commerce. I also have an Edward Jones Investment Branch here in Prior Lake. The candidates will introduce themselves shortly. Thank you all for attending. Just a friendly reminder, please turn off cell phones at this time. Also refrain from talking amongst each other during the forum, and there is no clapping or loud noises until the forum ends. Thank you for participating in the City Council Candidates Forum. The open positions are: Mayor, four-year term; two positions of a four-year term of city councilors; and one position that will be fulfilling the rest of the term from a resigned councillor, Warren Erickson, that will be a two-year term. Thank you to our candidates, attendees, city staff, and viewers. We think this is a great way for our businesses and residents to get to know the candidates before they cast their vote on November 3rd. I have prepared questions that were sent to the candidates prior to this forum, and we have questions that the candidates have not seen yet. Due to COVID, we are hosting the forum differently this year. We have six candidates that will be onsite in City Hall, and we have one candidate that will join us via Zoom. Mr. David Bryant is out of town and will not be joining us. He is applying for a two-year term. We have a few rules for tonight to stay on schedule and keep everything fair. I will call on every candidate to introduce themselves and tell us why they are running for City Council. This is part... This part of the forum will be up to two minutes in length. After the introductions, I will ask prepared questions that were sent to the candidates prior to this event, and follow with questions that the candidates have not heard or seen yet. These questions are limited to one minute. There will be no opportunity for rebuttals until your final comments at the conclusion of the forum. At the conclusion, each candidate will have a final two minutes to summarize their position, offer any rebuttal, and offer why residents should vote for them in November. I have a timekeeper in the front row. To keep everyone on time, please abide by the following... Please abide by following the time rules. Let's begin. The first question is just to introduce yourselves and tell us why you're running for City Council. You'll each have two minutes to respond. We'll start with Mr. Briggs. Please introduce yourself. You have two minutes.
Good afternoon. I want to thank the Prior Lake Chamber for hosting this event. Thank you also to those that are with us in the council chambers, those joining from home, and all that are taking the time to learn about your city council candidates and the importance of your vote this year. My name is Kurt Briggs, and it's been a sincere honor and privilege to have had the opportunity of serving the citizens of Prior Lake as mayor these past four years. I've been humbled by the experience, and I've learned that the greatest asset within our community are the citizens, the businesses, and the volunteer service organizations that call Prior Lake home. It's been through countless phone calls, emails, along with conversations at Lund's, in one of our many boutiques, at Ada Weiss, in Boathouse Brothers, and here in these council chambers, that I've learned about the needs, wants, desires, and values of this community. Each of these conversations, built upon the learnings from the previous, have caused me to join in with the shared optimism that many have for the future of our community. It is with that, along with the trust and support that many have shown for this council, I'd like to continue to serve as the mayor of this wonderful city.
Thank you, Mr. Briggs. Mr. Brayden. Mr. Brayden is a candidate for the four-year term. Please introduce yourself and tell us why you're running for City Council. You have two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Zach Brayden, and I'm running for reelection to the four-year seat on the Prior Lake City Council. I'd first like to thank the Prior Lake Chamber, Sandy, tonight's moderator, and city staff for making this event happen. I'd also like to thank each of the candidates tonight for stepping forward in an important election and participating in our democratic process. Each candidate should be commended for stepping into the arena. It isn't easy, especially during these times. The past four years, I've worked hard to give the people and businesses a voice in our city. I'm an entrepreneur and owner of numerous businesses within the Twin Cities, Midwest, and Western United States. As a business owner, I'm confident I've brought some real value and common sense to our city over the past four years. My business experience and understanding of finance, how to plan for growth, and how to get a return on investment has helped put the city of Prior Lake on a sustainable path. My wife, our sons, and our Labrador Bull love Prior Lake. We love our home, the neighborhood, the small-town feel, and the high quality of life that we enjoy here. And over the past four years, there's been a positive change in our city. There have been many challenges and much accomplished, and I've taken on city issues that were waiting decades for a solution. We've changed the city's debt trajectory and established a philosophy of pay-as-you-go, made investments in our public safety to keep our community safe, and work to preserve and protect our neighborhoods, homes, and businesses. I've fought to ensure that developers pay their fair share, fighting to get legislation passed at the state. And we've changed the philosophy on growth here to ensure that it's tied to an actual return on investment, the same way we do in business. We've increased communication, utilizing social media, and now we have the ability to livestream as we do here tonight. And there's much more work to be done. We have a downtown that's changing, and we need to be sure we keep our small-town feel and the brand of Prior Lake. I have a record of proven results, not promises, actual results, and I'm ready and willing to serve our great community again. I've worked hard for our residents and businesses the past four years to earn another four-year term, and if reelected, I'll bring that same commitment, resolve, and leadership to our great community again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brayden. Also for a four-year term, Mr. Burkhardt, please introduce yourself and tell us why you're running for City Council. You have two minutes.
Thank you, Sandy and Kristy and the chamber for hosting this event, and thank you to our staff for their assistance with the technology and the facilities. My name is Kevin Burkhardt. I've lived in Prior Lake since 1975. Both my wife Laura and I grew up and were educated here. We have two children. Our boy Finn is two years old, while Grace, our new baby girl, is two weeks young. I am running for reelection, having served on your council since 2016. I'm a former certified public accountant, a successful entrepreneur, and philanthropic leader. I bring a highly experiential, thoughtful, and communicative skill set to municipal leadership. Before I go further, allow me to express my gratitude. It's been an honor to serve you, the citizens of my hometown, alongside Mayor Briggs and Councillor Brayden and Councillor Thompson. They represent the best of Prior Lake, seasoned professionals, and understand what it means to be servant leaders. And I want to personally express my appreciation of Mayor Briggs. Our hometown would be hard-pressed to find anyone who dedicates more time and energy to a community position. He has been a tireless advocate and leader on behalf of Prior Lake. These past four years, your council has taken an even keel, fiscally prudent approach to the tax levy, increasing both short and long-term reserves and decreasing debt. I'm proud of the work we've accomplished buttressing our city finances. Your city council has doubled down on our commitment to economic development. We are making the right investments for our future. We've also made great strides in St. Paul with the legislature. Our relationship with the SMSC is strong, and our infrastructure betterments have been substantial, including the 13 and 21 roundabout reconstruction project. None of this would be possible without our city staff. From day one, when asked how I like being a councillor, I'd respond, "The staff are really good to work with, really good people." They are exceptional and more patient with the electeds than we deserve. We often ask for too much of them with scarce resources, and they deliver. I hope to earn your vote again. I look forward to the discussion this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Burkhardt. Running for a two-year term, Ms. Churchill. Please introduce yourself and tell us why you're running for City Council. You have two minutes.
All right. Hi, I'm Kim Churchill, and I have lived in Prior Lake for the past 15 years with my husband Jesse and his daughter Caitlin. We live in the Frog Town neighborhood, which is one of the older neighborhoods in Prior Lake near Greenwood School. My schooling, my education, comes from Morehead State, where I got my bachelor's degree, and the University of Cincinnati, where I got my master's in social work. I've worked in a variety of social work positions in the past, and right now I work for Medica, the insurance company, as a care coordinator, primarily working with older people. My civic experience does not include being a member of the city council yet. I have worked with the Community Engagement Committee of the city council for the past four years. I've... Part of what I do on the Community Engagement Committee is take information from the council and disseminate it into the community in a variety of platforms like Facebook and Nextdoor. The other part of that job is getting feedback from the community for information, for their opinion on things in the community, and giving that information to the city council. I've been doing this for four years, and I religiously attend the city council meetings as part of my position on the Community Engagement Committee. I also belong to the Local Advisory Council for Mental Health. For Scott County, I represent Prior Lake on that committee. I'm part of the Laker Educational Foundation and the Scott... The Scale Live, Learn, Earn Housing Subcommittee. I want to be a councillor because I'm actively engaged in city council business right now. I've been a part of what's going on with city council, and I actually wanted to add my voice rather than just being at the work sessions and listening. I'd like to be part of that. I really think I would be a great asset to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Churchill. Also, with a two-year candidate, Mr. Cronquist, please introduce yourself and tell us why you're running for City Council. You have two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Dan, Lieutenant Dan Cronquist. I spent 26 years in the Navy, both active duty and reserve time. Throughout that time, I worked very hard, working my way up through the ranks. I earned a degree in physics, geology, and a master's in science from San Diego State in hydrogeology. I work for the Department of Natural Resources studying groundwater. Got a beautiful wife. We've got two wonderful kids and a dog that loves our neighbors just a little bit more than us. The reason I'm running specifically is because I'm there when people need help. And whether it was the... My son's school asking for help for building wood duck houses, or the state asking me to help by showing off groundwater models, or even the county asking for me to be a committee member. When the city asked, they said they needed somebody to fill a two-year position. I said, "I can do that. I'm just here to serve." Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cronquist. Running for a four-year term, Mr. Fredrickson, please introduce yourself and tell us why you're running for City Council. You have two minutes.
He's not receiving the audio.
We will come back to Mr. Fredrickson. He is on Zoom. So we will come back. Mr. Hecklander. Please introduce yourself. Tell us why you're running for City Council. Also for a two-year term. You have two minutes.
I think Fredrickson could go.
Yeah, I'm happy to. I can't really hear what anybody said, but if they can hear me, then I'll go for it.
Okay, we are going back to Mr. Fredrickson.
All right. You just tell me where to start, and I'll go for it.
Go now.
All right, perfect. All right, so I assume you guys can see me. I unfortunately can't see you. I apologize. I'm not there in person. My name's Kyle Fredrickson. I am obviously running for City Council. I had to leave. My grandfather recently passed, so I'm actually back in Idaho where I grew up for his funeral, so I apologize again that I'm not there. so I apologize again that I'm not there in person. But if I introduce myself, basically what I would say is, I truly am a person that believes in smaller government. I believe in America. I believe in the values that she holds here, that she has as part of her foundation. I call myself a family man, a husband, a father, a patriot, an outdoorsman, all of these, an avid runner. Ultimately, I'm a patriot, and I believe that America is the greatest country in the world. I believe that truly government should be of the people, for the people, by the people. That's what I remember. I believe that the truest sense of that is local government. And really, in order for local government, or any government, to be successful, it has to be with community involvement, with the voices of people, truly in a way that everyone's voice is heard. I'm running because I feel like I have a very strong background that would be beneficial to the city. My career choice has been in business for most of my time from merchandise.
Thirty seconds.
Brand management, where I currently work at General Mills. But I am a very strong advocate for fiscal conservatism.
You're done, and that's your time. Thank you, Kyle. I'll call you back.
Thank you, Mr. Fredrickson. Mr. Hacklander, running for a two-year term, please introduce yourself and tell us why you're running for city council. You have two minutes.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the Chamber for putting this on and for inviting all of us to be here this evening, and for all of you who are tuning in to watch this. My name is Lee Hacklander. I have a wife, Mary. We have three adult children, one of whom is a junior in college. Our oldest passed away a few years ago at the age of 19. I'm an attorney in Savage, Minnesota. Been an attorney for 24 years now. I was born and grew up in Minnesota, grew up on a farm down by Blue Earth. I attended college at Gustavus Adolphus in St. Peter, and later went to law school in Hamlin University in St. Paul. In between there, I've lived overseas. I've done a couple of stints in the Peace Corps in Lesotho in Jamaica, and I've also lived in the Boston area for a while. Been a resident of Prior Lake for 10 years. I first got involved paying attention to what's going on with this city. Maybe some of the people here who've moved here recently aren't aware of this, but those of you who've been here for a while may remember the project that the county wanted to push through at 42 and 13 there that was going to greatly affect the Rutgers neighborhood. And I attended my first public meeting here to find out more about that, and it was standing room only. And that's where I learned that it makes a difference if you participate. And I started going to the public hearings and the meetings that the city council had and to their work sessions, and that's when I learned that the city council does a heck of a lot more than just meet a couple of times a month. If you go to the work sessions, that's where you learn what's really going on, and that's where you get the information about everything and every issue that the city council has to consider. And so I started paying a lot more to what's going on with the city. I've always been a volunteer ever since I was in college. Like I said, I've served overseas as an attorney. I do an awful lot of pro bono work for people. I represent people for free, and I've always done a number of other things. As an attorney, I think that a skill set that I definitely would bring to this.
Thank you, Mr. Hacklander. All right, moving on to question two. This question was sent to candidates prior to the event. Question is, what do you see as a city councillor's roles and responsibilities? You will each have one minute to respond. For this round, we will start with four-year candidate, Mr. Braid. Please share what you see as a city councillor's roles and responsibilities. One minute.
Thank you. I believe one of the main roles as a city council member is to listen to the needs of our residents and businesses. As my grandfather would say, "Son, you have two ears and one mouth. Please use them in that allocation." Now, I don't know if he just said that because he thought I talked too much as a kid, but I found that to be pretty good advice. A councillor's responsibility, though, is to the taxpayer, to be the bridge of the city to the pocketbook of the taxpayer. A councillor should be the gatekeeper to our city's finances, the check in the system to ensure our tax dollars are spent wisely, to be good financial stewards to manage our taxes and debt so we do not mortgage our children's future, ensuring that the residents' voice is followed both fiscally and otherwise, and that decisions are based on the community's needs, both present and the future. A good councillor should approach this work with a servant's mentality, serving the people and businesses of Prior Lake, ensuring there is communication, transparency, and accountability to the public as we work for the people. This is their city, and if I'm reelected, I'll continue to be that voice for the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Braid. Next, four-year candidate, Mr. Burkhardt, please share what you see as a city councillor's roles and responsibilities. You have one minute.
Thank you. A good resource for this is the League of Minnesota Cities. We're a policymaking body. We are what's called a Plan B legal structure, so our council hires and supervises the city manager. He or she hires and manages everyone else. The council is a board of directors, and the city manager is the CEO. To be effective, you need bandwidth in your schedule. It takes time to not just show up, but show up prepared. I'm in a good spot for this, and it has served me well. I sold a company five years ago and semi-retired. I've enjoyed applying myself to municipal government at the local, state, and national level on behalf of Prior Lake. One must also have an operational umbrella with which you approach public policy. My tenants for public policy are straightforward. It's simple, equitable, and easy to administer. You need a willingness to compromise, build a coalition around your ideas, and work well with staff, and I recognize there's always room for growth in these areas.
Thank you, Mr. Burkhardt. Next, two-year candidate, Ms. Churchill. What do you see as a city councillor's roles and responsibilities? One minute.
First and foremost, I see the responsibility of the council to be the fiscal steward of the taxpayers' money. That's the primary importance of the council. We also, as a council, need to manage the growth of the city so that it's equitable to both the community members and the businesses, so that we have a good plan in place for the long term. Also, transparency and accountability is a very important thing that the council must have. We must be able to communicate with the community and do listen to what they have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Churchill. Two-year candidate, Mr. Cronquist, what do you see as a city councillor's roles and responsibilities? One minute.
Thank you. I actually had a little bit of a problem thinking about this, so I went around to talk to my neighbors and asked them what they expected of a city council member, and most of their responses was just that. They wanted to see the city council interact with the communities, which the city council has done. It's just, that's it, just to be part of the community and make sure the city is running properly.
Thank you, Mr. Cronquist. Four-year candidate, Mr. Fredrickson, what do you see as a city councillor's roles and responsibilities? You have one minute to respond.
Hello?
Go ahead.
So, again, I can't answer the question. What was the question?
Roles and responsibilities, roles and responsibilities of the position. One minute.
Yep. So, keep it short and simple. The role and responsibility of city council, in my mind, is to truly be the voice of the community, to hear what the people have to say and create policy accordingly. It's to be fiscally responsible, to make sure that we are staying within a budget, that we are managing our expenses and our debt appropriately, that we're managing infrastructure, and, most importantly, we're planning for the present while preparing for the future. So if we do all those things well, the city should be in a really good shape, and our quality of life should maintain.
Twenty seconds.
Those things are super critical, and I think where I can come in and help is ultimately with fiscal conservativeness and fiscal responsibility.
Thank you, Mr. Fredrickson. Two-year term, Mr. Hacklander, what do you see as a city councillor's responsibilities? One minute.
Thank you. The city council is responsible for our budget and for making sure that that money is well-spent to provide excellent services to our residents. And it's imperative, in order to do that properly, is to listen to our residents and try and understand their needs and their concerns, and to appreciate those concerns and those needs. And if I'm elected to the city council, I'm going to be challenging my fellow council members, as well as the staff of the city, and I think that we have some excellent staff. And I'm going to be expecting them to challenge me back, and I expect to have a robust discussion about how to improve those services at the lowest cost possible for our city. One of the other things that a councillor does is all of us take turns as liaisons to the other cities around us, to the Economic Development Authority, the SMSC, Scott County, and the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hacklander. Mayor candidate Briggs, what do you see as a city councillor's roles and responsibilities? One minute.
Well, certainly statute and bylaws would give us a textbook answer, but to me, it really boils down to the role of a council member is service to others over self. You know, if the job actually had a job description, the first bullet point would be duties as assigned. What I've learned in the past four years is probably the most important attribute in the role of a councillor is to remain curious, to set aside preconceived notions or ideas, and seek others out for understanding. It's a role that requires a commitment to learning the intricacies and complexities of issues, to then have the courage and accountability of acting decisively in the absence of perfect information that never arrives when you need it. The role of the mayor carries some additional responsibilities beyond those of cutting ribbons. The mayor uniquely leads the meeting, but must create a culture of collaboration and compromise focused on solving complex problems.
Thank you, Mr. Briggs. Moving on to question three. Do you think downtown is healthy and successful, and what would you like to see in the future downtown? You'll each have one minute to respond to this question. This question was sent to candidates prior to the event. For this round, we will start with four-year candidate, Mr. Burkhardt. Again, do you think downtown is healthy and successful, and what would you like to see in the future downtown? You have one minute.
We are at the start of a rebirth, a renaissance of downtown Prior Lake. With the advent of the 13 and 21 reconstruction, some felt our downtown would suffer. Our downtown is going to double in size. We are going to enjoy two main streets, north and south. I'm confident South Main Street will see a new VFW, residential living spaces with street-level retail, and additional parking and amenities in the coming years. We have a strong EDA board stacked with community thought leaders. Our city staff are exceptional. I'm often heard praising Casey McCabe, our development officer. If the phone rings and it's a business interest in our community, you want Casey answering that phone call. Our investments with the EDA to procure land for future commercial space in our downtown corridor will reap dividends, especially with North Main Street. As our big new banner says across 21, "Prior Lake welcomes you, and we are open for business."
Thank you, Mr. Burkhardt. Two-year candidate, Ms. Churchill, do you think downtown is healthy and successful, and what would you like to see in the future downtown? You have one minute.
Well, I think that the downtown is becoming more successful every day, outside of the impact of COVID, of course, but I, you know, I see the vibrancy coming out in the town. One example would be the Boathouse Brothers. It's been a great addition to our town, and it keeps that small-town feel, which all of the community loves. And I guess my vision would be that we could continue to get that small-town feel while managing the growth in a way that's equitable to the current businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Churchill. Two-year candidate, Mr. Cronquist, do you think downtown is healthy and successful, and what would you like to see in the future downtown? You have one minute.
I'd like to admit that I was wrong about something. I thought the 13, 21 roundabout was a terrible idea. I was wrong. It was great. I think it's really done a good job for this community. On the south side with the VFW, some mixed-use properties are going to be great with stores at the bottom and living spaces on top. I like the way it's going, and I hope we continue moving that way. You guys have done a great job.
Thank you, Mr. Cronquist. Four-year candidate, Mr. Fredrickson, do you think downtown is healthy and successful, and what would you like to see in the future downtown? You have one minute.
Please state your name after the tone. Google Voice will try to connect you.
Kevin. Okay, Kyle, this one is about the healthiness of downtown. One minute.
All right. So, I would say, in general, we do have a healthy downtown. I think culturally, we have a really strong downtown, has a strong small-town feel and a quaintness to it. It's clean and has a good environment. I love the services that we have there. I love the small businesses that are around there and the hometown startups that we have in that area. My biggest concern with the downtown is really about helping those businesses survive. This is an unprecedented time with COVID, and it's really hard for these small businesses to stay open. So as a future state, I'd really love to see our community really.
Thirty seconds.
Push really to support these businesses, to help the community members get out and support these businesses so they can make it through this tough time. I'd love to keep our small-town feel. I'd love for our small businesses to not only survive, but thrive. By doing that, I think as a community, we can really make and maintain this great downtown that we have.
Thank you, Mr. Fredrickson. Two-year candidate, Mr. Hacklander, do you think downtown is healthy and successful, and what would you like to see in the future downtown?
Well, my hat is off to our downtown businesses and all of our businesses during this tough time, during this pandemic, with all the difficulties and the restrictions that we've had. It's kind of hard to say that everything is 100% healthy when you see places like Lori Michaels Laker's apparel shop have to close, but in general, I like the direction that we're going with the downtown. Things are looking up. I know that our EDA is working hard to develop things over by the VFW and by Sebastian's, and I know there are serious plans to develop the lots between the city hall and the rotary. And I think it's important for us to all keep working to make downtown as vibrant as it can be. I know everyone says the same thing, and I think everybody agrees. Everyone likes the small-town feel that we have, and I think it's important to continue to keep working on that, and that's what I'm going to try and do if I'm elected.
Thank you, Mr. Hacklander. Mayor candidate Briggs, do you think downtown is healthy and successful, and what would you like to see in the future downtown? One minute.
So if I could, I'll split the two questions. To the question of successful, my answer is yes. Our downtown has endured significant headwinds this past three years, a road project, and now COVID. And as candidate Hacklander mentioned, we have lost a business, but I want to say from the point of success, new investment has arrived. As to healthy, I'd say that we've made our way to the other side of the challenges, but it's caused significant patients and reserves on the part of our business owners. I'm extremely optimistic and bullish on improving the health of the downtown for two reasons. The city council removed a significant barrier to investment by seeing through the changes in the downtown road network. And the second, the Business Engagement Committee, the Economic Development Authority, the city staff, as Mr. Burkhardt shared, are superb, and they're going to continue to focus energy and resources maintaining a vibrant downtown Prior Lake.
Thank you, Mr. Briggs. Four-year candidate, Mr. Braid, do you think downtown is healthy and successful, and what would you like to see in the future downtown? You have one minute.
Well, my affinity to our downtown and advocating to be its voice has been pretty well documented. We've come a long way in four years. The downtown road network has been decided after decades of discussion. We've lifted the restrictions in our downtown neighborhood so they can freely invest in their homes and their neighborhood, and it shows. Markets have listened. There's been investment in our downtown the past three years that we haven't seen in decades. We have an ice cream shop, wonderful boutiques to shop in, a taproom, and delightful farmers' markets to enjoy. We've added numerous buildings, the Prior Lake Revival, the Plate Restaurant, all of which our community has been asking for for years. We've helped to facilitate the privately-funded mural, giving downtown additional character in that small-town feel we all love. Downtown is a far healthier place than it was four years ago, and we will get through this pandemic. There's additional development being planned in our downtown and city, and we need more of what we've had the past four years. We need to maintain. We need to maintain the brand and look of Prior Lake, its small-town feel. We've witnessed this under our current leadership, and I will continue to work to make our downtown a place that Lakers desire it to be.
Thank you, Mr. Bray. Moving on to question four. How should the city help and support businesses and employees who are impacted during the COVID-19 pandemic? You will each have one minute to respond to this question. This question was sent to candidates prior to the event. For this round, we will start with two-year candidate, Ms. Churchill. Again, the question, how should the city help and support businesses and employees who are impacted during the COVID-19 pandemic? You have one minute.
Well, first and foremost, we've got to continue the shop-local, buy-local marketing that the Chamber has done so well for the past few years due to the 21 and 13 rigmarole. As far as like allocating specific funds for specific businesses that are having trouble, I think that's something that the council would obviously have to work on managing. And I think that working with the Chamber to figure out a good business plan that would help all of the community businesses would be a great way to start. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Churchill. Two-year candidate, Mr. Cronquist. How should the city help and support businesses and employees who are impacted during the COVID-19 pandemic? One minute.
Thank you. So the city actually has been doing quite a bit for the community in COVID. As you can see by the chairs all being spread out here, they're following the guidelines that have been placed by the government. Also, dealing with the Chamber of Commerce is actually the number-one thing that they could continue to do. You go to the person that deals with the businesses the most, and that would be them.
Thank you, Mr. Cronquist. Four-year candidate, Mr. Fredrickson. How should the city help and support businesses and employees who are impacted during the COVID-19 pandemic? You have one minute.
Yeah, so I mentioned in my last response, really the need, this is an unprecedented time for our small businesses especially. I think the city can play an important role, but it shouldn't be the only role. I think we should be encouraging our small businesses to definitely be using all the resources available to them from the federal all the way down. But I do think that our job as a city should be to help these businesses by organizing the community, by getting out of the way
Thirty seconds.
from them, get that burden that they're already feeling, and thinking creatively. One of the biggest things is just letting them get back to work. I strongly believe that small business owners and entrepreneurs will, they have the tenacity and the fortitude to make it through this. We just need to help them by removing those barriers, and I know if we do, that they'll make it through.
Thank you, Mr. Fredrickson. Two-year candidate, Mr. Hacklander. How should the city help and support businesses and employees who are impacted during the COVID-19 pandemic? One minute.
Well, I think if it's possible that we should continue to provide more exemptions to some of the permits that are required by the businesses. I know that the city took some of the CARES funding that it had, over $100,000, and allocated that to the Scott County CDA, but I think there were a lot of problems that businesses had trying to apply for those funds so that they could actually receive them. And if any more funding is actually made available and allocated to the CDA, we need to make sure that that process is more streamlined in the future so that those businesses can access those funds. And I think that as a city council in the city, we need to try and communicate more with or continue to communicate with our legislature and encourage them to provide more assistance for the city so that we can help our businesses.
Thank you, Mr. Hacklander. Mayor candidate Briggs. How should the city help and support businesses and employees who are impacted during the COVID-19 pandemic? One minute.
I'd like to start off with, it's in times of challenge, the character is truly displayed. And the character of the city council and the city staff came forward almost immediately as soon as the pandemic struck in March, and I just want to share some of the things that this council and staff did. Prior Lake was the first city in Scott County that declared a state of emergency that gave the city manager some unique authorities. And those authorities included deferral of certain fees immediately for our restaurants to provide immediate relief. The city established business coalitions with restaurants and boutique owners, together to build a collective voice. From this beginning, we created access for our business owners to speak with the council, with state legislators, legislators, and also the governor. The council also engaged service organizations in the community to volunteer fencing for our restaurants to provide outdoor dining locations, as well as engaged those same service organizations with a Meals for Heroes program that provided acknowledgement that our first responders are essential, so a meal for them, but also brought a visit into our restaurants.
Thank you, Mr. Briggs. Four-year candidate, Mr. Bray. How should the city help and support businesses and employees who are impacted during the COVID-19 pandemic? One year, one minute.
Well, you're looking at a business owner greatly impacted by COVID-19. I'm acutely aware of the environment that we're facing, and I might be the only one up here tonight still operating in a business under limited capacity. I think we need to give some context on the environment before COVID-19 and the response during it. In my first three years of serving as your Prior Lake City Council member and an EDA commissioner, we increased the commercial tax base. We increased the commercial tax base more than the previous nine years combined. So there's a team here now with proven results to help find our way out of this. Prior Lake was also the first city to send letters to Governor Walz requesting guidance on how to safely open up our business and restaurants. The city of Prior Lake has given exemptions on regulation, extensions on permits, and expanded patio seating. The Prior Lake Rotary Club was generous enough to help restaurants open their patio seating. We allocated $100,000 of CARES funding to a grant program for our Prior Lake businesses, and we need to allocate even more. We need to use some of the CARES funding to minimize the tax and fee impacts to our residents and businesses, and we need to continue to listen and represent the businesses and employees that have been affected, and continue to push our state and national representatives for help.
Thank you, Mr. Bray. Four-year candidate, Mr. Burkhardt. How should the city help and support businesses and employees who are impacted during the COVID-19 pandemic? One minute.
As we're all aware, this is a challenging time for our community and nation. I doubt any of us are wholly satisfied with the national or state response to COVID. It was under that framework. We operated and continue to operate, focusing on what we can do and doing it as well as we can. Your city is in the hands of a highly capable staff. We have an emergency plan. We followed the plan. As we marched through this past year, we reminded everyone to note improvements we can make so we can better the plan for next time. We went multimodal. We came together. Police Chief Frazier and his staff stepped up with PPE supplies and more hours. Fire Chief Steinhaus established duty crews at each station so our firefighting capabilities were always ready. We made sure the water would continue to run and be clean. Numerous community organizations, both civic and faith-based, came together and chipped in. At a local level, it's about the basics, and I'm confident we had those covered. I was proud we took a leadership role among cities, pushing the governor to open local businesses utilizing protocols at the big-box stores. This is what we could do for businesses and employees, and we hit it head-on.
Thank you, Mr. Burkhardt. Moving on to question five. Question five, what specific ideas do you have to further economic development within the city? This question was not sent to the candidates prior to this forum. You'll each have one minute to respond. For this question, we're going to start with two-year candidate, Mr. Cronquist. What specific ideas do you have to further economic development within the city? One minute.
Thank you. So I believe that to further it, we need to look at the type of businesses we want to bring into our community. We could slap up some strip malls and fill them full of tattoo parlors and vape stores if we wanted to, but I don't think that's really the direction that the community wants to go. I think we should set incentives for the businesses that we want to come here and make sure, once again, we work with the Chamber of Commerce, and I need people that want to come here to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cronquist. Four-year candidate, Mr. Fredrickson on Zoom. What specific ideas do you have to further economic development within the city? You'll have one minute.
All right, so there's lots of different things that we can do. I think I mentioned the idea of getting out of the way, being primarily the first thing. I know if we allow our citizens to do what they want to do, financially, they'll be successful. So getting out of the way, smaller government, reducing taxes where we can, those things will all stimulate the economy and develop our businesses and our community, which in turn would
Thirty seconds.
our So I definitely believe in, it's like you have smaller government and getting out of the way more than anything else. Where appropriate, I think subsidies could play in. I think if there's a specific need, we need to address in the community, but overall, I would say getting out of the way, making smaller government, and allowing people to pursue their vision for their companies in the community.
Thank you, Mr. Fredrickson. Two-year candidate, Mr. Hacklander. What specific ideas do you have to further economic development within the city? One minute.
Well, I think we need to do what we've been doing already. The more that we continue to improve downtown and attract more businesses, the more successful we become and the more desirable we become, the more attractive we become to other businesses. And I think that a lot of other communities, a lot of other folks are starting to notice that Prior Lake is on the rise. After all, success begets success. And they know that we have serious plans through our Economic Development Authority to develop a lot more of downtown, and I think that they're going to be paying attention to that. And so if we continue with that and we continue to encourage that business and we continue to listen to our existing businesses for what they want and what they think will work here, then I think that we'll be continuing to be successful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hacklander. Mayor candidate Briggs. What specific ideas do you have to further economic development within the city? One minute.
I think there's four things we can do. The first is to eliminate barriers to that development, and the biggest barrier to development is uncertainty and risk. The development community wants to know that if they bring investment here, that there will be a return on investment. Second thing we need to do is actively engage developers. Conventional wisdom is the vast majority of your investment is going to come from individuals and developers that live within your community. We have been actively engaging, communicating with those developers to let them know both the properties, but as well as the gap analysis, what's needed in our community. I think we also need to be clear in communicating who and what we want to be as it relates to a community and the businesses that we seek and the commercial opportunities that we'd like to see in our community. And finally, when the business does come, we need to be there to support them, to show up and be there with our dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Briggs. Four-year candidate, Mr. Bray. What specific ideas do you have to further economic development within the city? One minute.
Well, we need to start to continue the investment that we've put into our EDA, and that's really just started in earnest the last four years. We've started to fund the EDA to allow property acquisitions. We've changed enabling resolutions so that they may buy property, and they may help businesses facilitate coming to downtown and into our city. We need to continue to create a stable environment for our business and for investment, and continue to identify what we want our community to look like and go and seek out that development. We've worked hard to change the reputation of Prior Lake, and I think now it's starting to become more of a business-friendly environment, and I think the markets have noticed, take notice, and we have to keep working at it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bray. Four-year candidate, Mr. Burkhardt. What specific ideas do you have to further economic development within the city? One minute.
I have a few ideas. In our last remaining acreage that we have for development within our city, we need to look for any opportunity to carve out commercial, one and where we can. And I'd like to compliment councillor Annette Thompson. When we were analyzing some raw land on the north side of town, she was the first one to say, can we make any of that commercial? And that was genius. And we figured out a way to make that happen, to zone it that way. I'd like to continue investing in our EDA. We're really fortunate to have aces in their places right now, really top-shelf folks on that committee, led by councillor Bray and mayor Briggs. I do not want to play the incentive game that has become the standard across the country in the economic development hierarchy, selling our tax base down the river, hurting existing residents and current businesses. I think what we have is a value proposition. If businesses call and they want to set up shop here, we're not going to give them anything because we have the best value proposition in the Southwest Twin Cities. We are open for business.
Thank you, Mr. Burkhardt. Two-year candidate, Ms. Churchill. What specific ideas do you have to further economic development within the city? One minute.
Well, like everyone else, I would like to see the EDA continue its good work. I mean, obviously, they've been doing a great job. We've really done some great things in the past few years and would like to see that continue. Some of the things that I was jotting down as people were speaking was, I was thinking about, there's a lot of industrial acreage on the east side of town by Buckingham, and I think we could somehow leverage that into more industrial businesses that, you know, might be a good spot to start. It would be great to be able to partner with the Chamber, because quite honestly, there's some great ideas that come out of the Chamber, and it's a good place to start. And that's that.
Thank you, Ms. Churchill. Moving on to question number six. How would you balance the need to keep taxes down with the need to provide quality city services? This question was not sent to candidates prior to the forum. You will each have one minute to respond. For this question, we'll be starting with our individual on Zoom here. So our four-year candidate, Mr. Fredrickson. How would you balance the need to keep taxes down with the need to provide quality city services? One minute.
How would you balance the need to provide quality city services while keeping taxes down? Okay.
Sorry, can you
Yes.
repeat that question?
Yes. How would you balance delivering quality city services while keeping taxes down?
Perfect. So I think the first thing is ruthless prioritization. So I think either you have to pick which things are most important for our community. I would argue a few of those would be our essential services, so police, firefighters, that kind of thing. Make sure that we are supporting them fully, because they make our community safe and healthy, and in turn, that'll build everything else up. I think there's also just this idea of maintaining our base. I don't, I think we need to be responsible. I think we leaned in too much on
Thirty seconds.
in our city. We need to do that more reasonably, because we'll put ourselves in the burden and the liability that we can't manage, and then we have to increase taxes to pay off our debt, which I will always disapprove of. So I think it needs to be responsible spending, managing our debt, preparing and involving the community, but ultimately prioritizing what's important and being willing to cut what's not.
Thank you, Mr. Fredrickson. Two-year candidate, Mr. Hacklander. How would you balance the need to keep taxes down with the need to provide quality city services? One minute.
Nobody likes to pay any more taxes than they need to, but what people expect is a fully-functional police force that's fully-staffed, an excellent fire department, and good streets and trails. After all, that's why a lot of people moved here, because of our environment and our wonderful trails and our trees and our woods and everything else here. But you have to listen to the community, and they have to understand that if you want these services, it's going to cost some money. So it's going to be necessary to talk to people and say, look, you've got to figure out what you want. And I think that every year, we have an annual survey that goes out, and I think that people understand that you get what you pay for. And I think it is possible, and I think that the current city council has done a really good job of making sure that those services have stayed in place at a reasonable cost, and I think that we can continue to do that. But the most important thing is to get out in the community and talk to people and to be transparent about the costs for providing these services that everyone expects.
Thank you, Mr. Hacklander. Mayor candidate Briggs. How would you balance the need to keep taxes down with the need to provide quality city services? One minute.
The balance is one that is incredibly difficult with real consequences. The reality of having to do more The reality of having to do more with less will be a perpetual challenge that this council is faced with. I think there's a couple of things that we need to do more effectively as a council. One, we need to set expectations for citizens. When we attempted to alter our winter snow removal plans, it caused some real challenges for a select group of citizens. Well, we need to get ahead of a lot of that when we do adjust any or make any modifications of services. So expectation setting needs to be, we need to be better at expectation setting. And then finally, in that same communication, what are the trade-offs we're going to make here? Because indeed, when a dollar is not spent in one area, it'll be spent in another. There are real costs that are borne by the community.
Thank you, Mr. Briggs. Four-year candidate, Mr. Braid, how would you balance the need to keep taxes down with the need to provide quality city services? One minute.
Well, this balancing act is not new. We've been struggling with this and working on it diligently for the past four years. For me, I look at core services. Public works, public safety, for me, are the first priority. We need to continue to build up our funds so we get to a pay-as-you-go, to reduce our reliance on debt, keeping the levies low and in check for the long term. We've done a good job with that over the past four years. We've changed the debt trajectory and made investments in our public safety, things that the community has asked for. And we need to continue to look for innovative ways to keep the costs down in the same way that we do in business.
Thank you, Mr. Braid. Four-year candidate, Mr. Burkhardt, how would you balance the need to keep taxes down with the need to provide quality city services? One minute.
In business, there's an old adage, quality, service, and price, which two would you like? Our budget is driven almost 70% by payroll, by salaries. And as a council, we've been very, I think, cautious about adding FTEs, employees, and making sure that those positions, if we're going to add them, that it's clearly a necessity. And the staff have been very diligent about that in that conversation. We've maintained, I believe, a very reasonable balance with the staff. I still believe that we could work more closely with the staff, and I'd like to see a process where we look at the budget more than three or four times late summer and into fall. We've talked about a retreat, and I also would be open to the idea of putting more brains on the budget, getting some citizen leaders involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burkhardt. Two-year candidate, Ms. Churchill, how would you balance the need to keep taxes down with the need to provide quality city services? One minute.
Well, I think the current council has done a really great job of creating a balance. Right now, they're trying to pay down the debt and save for future spending, which I think is a great goal to have. But they've also been very mindful of not increasing the tax burden. One of the things that we could do as a council would be to engage the community and find out what they really want. I mean, what are our community members willing to pay for? Are they willing to give an extra 1% to have better trails and more green space? And, you know, that communication, I think, is a good way to start.
Thank you, Ms. Churchill. Two-year candidate, Mr. Cronquist, how would you balance the need to keep taxes down with the need to provide quality city services? One minute.
Every person that's up here has had some great things to say about this and some great ideas. I actually thought about this as one of the reasons why I decided to run, is what can we do in the community to bring some of these issues to light and how to deal with them? The trails issue was brought up. There's groups here in town that would love, for example, the Boy Scouts would love to have a chance to fix these trails. They're always looking for Eagle Scout projects. If we can get the Scouts involved, we may be able to cut a little bit of funding away from the trails and the trail maintenance by having the community take care of it. When it comes to public safety, I can't think of anybody off the top of my head who would say we need to cut public safety. It's just not the right time to be doing anything remotely close to that. So I guess my answer, short, is just reach out to the community a little bit more, find out what they want and what they're willing to do for it.
Thank you, Mr. Cronquist. Moving on to question seven. If elected, what steps would you take to put our city on a firmer financial footing? This question was not sent to candidates prior to this forum. You will each have one minute to respond. For this round, we will start with two-year candidate, Mr. Hacklander. Again, if elected, what steps would you take to put our city on a firmer financial footing? One minute.
Well, I like the direction that our city council has been taking for the last few years here, where it's been trying to pay down debt and get ahead of that game. They inherited quite a mess four years ago. Frankly, I was a little disappointed the other night when they approved their preliminary levy that was somewhat less than what staff had approved or had recommended. And I think it's going to be difficult for us to continue paying down that debt. I think that was the responsible thing to do. I look forward to that discussion, although, and I think that it's important for people to get involved. And, you know, there's going to be a public hearing on December 7th to discuss the levy, and I would encourage everyone to attend that.
Thank you, Mr. Hacklander. Mayor Candidate Briggs, if elected, what steps would you take to put our city on a firmer financial footing? One minute.
First, I'm going to say that I believe this council has taken those steps. I want to thank candidate Hacklander for his comments relative to the vote. Those steps that I think are important, and my position on this is crystal clear, it is the balance between debt and pay-as-you-go. This council has had excellent resolve in shifting us from going to the bond market or to the debt market to purchase, I would say, our everyday expenses at times in the form of trucks, to starting to set aside dollars. What that does mean, though, is tax levy. Tax levy, but also to eliminate the whipsawing that has occurred in times past, where we go to decrease tax levy, putting us in a bond hole that then requires a spike in tax levy subsequent years. So to me, it is that balance, and I believe many of those steps with the past three years have been taken.
Thank you, Mr. Briggs. Four-year candidate, Mr. Braid, if elected, what steps would you take to put our city on a firmer financial footing? One minute.
Well, we need more of the same. We need to continue to fund our CIP so we are more of a pay-as-you-go city. We need to keep looking at ways to innovate and cut costs, and we need to continue to be mindful of the full-time employees that we add year over year. We need to keep working on our debt and debt reduction. And to give a little context, since 2016, this council has changed the debt trajectory of our city. And we are now scheduled to reduce our city's debt by 35% by 2025. So we are on the right track. We need more of the same, and we need to continue to make the investments in our city and still be mindful about the tax impacts to our residents. And I think we've done a good job of balancing it, but, you know, we still need to improve on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Braid. Four-year candidate, Mr. Burkhardt, if elected, what steps would you take to put our city on a firmer financial footing? One minute.
Next year, there's potential for CARES Act funding to come to the city as a reimbursement for CARES Act expenses that we had. And in our initial discussions, I know that we're all interested in putting a healthy portion of that into reserves, and I think that that is a good idea and will help firm up our financial footing. I agree with the focus of trying to avoid debt. It is very difficult, I think, to operate and expect the future generation to shoulder those expenses. And every time that we do take on debt, no offense to Northland Securities, but whenever they show up here, I know that we're losing money because we're going to market with bonds, and every time we go to market with bonds, we're losing 1% off the top in transaction fees. You're going to take $7 million in bonds, you're throwing away $70,000 in taxpayer money immediately. I want to keep an even keel for family budgets, maintaining reasonable growth...
Thank you, Mr. Burkhardt.
...in government versus growth in family budgets. Thank you.
Two-year candidate, Ms. Churchill, if elected, what steps would you take to put our city on a firmer financial footing? One minute.
Well, as everybody else has said, I believe that the current council is doing a great job of working towards financial stability. I think paying down the debt and saving for future needs and keeping the reserve in the recommended balance between 40 and 50%, I believe, is a great way to continue doing what we need to do. I just think that what's going on right now is the best that we can do, and it's great. I mean, I'm just ecstatic about how things have been going for the past four years.
Thank you, Ms. Churchill. Two-year candidate, Mr. Cronquist, if elected, what steps would you take to put our city on a firmer financial footing? One minute.
This will be a short answer. Stay the course. There's nothing else to say. I mean, look at the mess that it was back in, you know, 2016 beforehand compared to how we're heading now. Keep moving in the same direction. Keep planning the way we are.
Thank you, Mr. Cronquist. Moving to Zoom, four-year candidate, Mr. Fredrickson, if elected, what steps would you take to put our city on a firmer financial footing? One minute.
If elected, what steps would you take to put our city on firmer financial footing?
Yeah, I think, I mentioned this in my previous answer, but the first thing is to live within our means. We as citizens are required to do that in our own homes. We should do it, we're required to do it as a government. I would say reduce our debt. It's alarming to me that we have essentially our full budget for the year in the amount of debt we have. And I know we're making steps to that, but we've got to accelerate that. We need to continue to put money away in a rainy day account. And most importantly, we need to ask ourselves before we approve or expand the budget...
30 seconds.
...the question first, what can go away? What can be cut? What can we reallocate as opposed to just adding? It's rare in government to take away. It's very common to add. So we need to ask that question first before we consider expanding the budget and be reasonable in that way.
Thank you, Mr. Fredrickson. Will you allow me moving to our closing statements? So I'm going to ask each of you to summarize your positions and state why the residents should vote for you on Tuesday, November 3rd. You will each have two minutes to respond. For this closing round, we will start with Mayor Candidate Briggs. Please summarize your positions. Tell us why residents should vote for you on Tuesday, November 3rd. You will have two minutes.
Quickly, I want to again thank the chamber for hosting this event, for those that are here in the council chambers, for the excellent moderation. I also want to thank my fellow candidates all the way along, the level of preparation. The citizens of Prior Lake, I would say, are going to be very well-served into the future. Four years ago, my closing comments focused on the change that I said I would bring to the city of Prior Lake. And quickly, here's what I said four years ago. We would bring accountability and transparency in communicating with you, the citizens of Prior Lake. The second was, we're going to apply common sense to our growth, to advocate for preserving our neighborhoods' businesses and small-town feel. The growth, we would encourage, would be self-sustaining, and it would carry its own weight before asking property taxpayers for a subsidy. The third commitment we made was to slow the spend and focus on financial stability. Of course, that was the full content of the most recent question that we all answered as candidates. We must continue to improve the community, as we said four years ago, without allowing huge debt to become the inheritance of future residents of Prior Lake. Those are the changes I said that I would deliver if elected mayor. I shared those things with you to rhetorically ask, how well did Kurt do on those promises of four years ago? As I conclude, I truly would like to thank the citizens of Prior Lake for having elected me to the best job I've ever had in serving you all as mayor. I was humbled then, and I remain humbled today. And finally, I do ask you to choose Briggs, to bring change four years ago. Today, I'm going to ask you to choose Briggs again based on the commitments made, kept, and the record of accomplishment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Briggs. Four-year candidate, Braid, please summarize your position, and statewide residents should vote for you on Tuesday, November 3rd. You have two minutes.
There has been a positive change in our city over the past four years, and I've worked hard to ensure that the people and businesses in our city have a voice, that we are focused on their needs, the needs of the community. The past four years, we've worked hard to get our city finances turned in a different direction. And since 2016, the city has changed its debt trajectory, no easy task, and we are now scheduled to reduce our debt by over 35% by 2025. The city now has a pay-as-you-go philosophy, and I'll continue to bring stability to our city's finances and work on reducing city spending and debt. Public safety has also been a priority for me over the past four years because safe communities are strong communities. We've made the necessary investments in our police and fire department, and we need to continue to do so. I'll remain an advocate for our public safety, and I'll work to reassure the residents and businesses that Prior Lake is a safe place to live and raise a family and a stable place to invest. I'll remain in support of common sense, sustainable development that enhances our small-town feel. And we need to continue to develop and expand our commercial tax base to reduce the burden on our residents. And I'll fight to make developers pay their fair share for the projects they participate in, not the taxpayer. In the last four years, I've worked to preserve the small-town feel and values of Prior Lake, a champion to make Prior Lake a Purple Heart City, and to get the Main Street Military Banner Program up and running. This celebrates our hometown heroes serving in the armed forces. We've also worked to make Prior Lake a snowmobile-friendly city to showcase our recreational community. I have a record of leadership and proven results, not promises, and I'm running for reelection to the Prior Lake City Council because I care about Prior Lake, and I'm running again because I believe in the city and I believe in the people and businesses of the city. And I believe that we can continue to make a difference together. And if reelected, I'll bring that same commitment and resolve as I did four years ago. Prior Lake is a great community, and I feel proud to be a part of it. With a continued leadership, we can make it even better. My name is Zach Braid, and I'm ready and willing to serve you again, so I ask for your vote this November.
Thank you, Mr. Braid. Four-year candidate, Mr. Burkhardt, please summarize your positions, and statewide residents should vote for you on Tuesday, November 3rd. You have two minutes.
This decade, Prior Lake will be navigating development of our last several thousand acres of raw land. I want to continue my legislative efforts, working towards growth, paying for growth. Significant forces are at work attempting to socialize costs of growth over existing residents. I'm proud of our current city council and the mayor's leadership on this issue. We need our legislature to protect taxpayers and enact municipal authority for infrastructure development fees. All infrastructure costs and improvements related to growth should be shouldered by developers, builders, and new homeowners, not existing residents. We are admired for our parks and trails. I want to focus our limited resources on quality parks instead of quantity of parks. I'd like to see us investing, closing several critical trail gaps to connect neighborhoods, provide safe access to downtown, keeping bikes and pedestrians off of Highway 13. As vice chair of the Minnesota Valley Transit Authority and director on the Suburban Transit Association, I'm well-positioned to lead us through coming changes with the Met Council and suburban transit. The Governor's Blue Ribbon Commission on Met Council Structure and Services is currently analyzing this and our Metropolitan Planning Organization governance model. Because the Met Council is a tax levying body, I believe they should be elected. Taxation without representation is antithetical to a healthy democracy because absence of elective representation is an absence of accountability. Suburban transit should continue to be operated by the suburbs, not metro transit. If metro transit takes it over, service will decrease and our needs will not be met. We'll still be paying the motor vehicle sales taxes for transit and end up where we were before, paying but not receiving adequate services. The suburban service model meets our needs, not that of the urban core, which metro transit currently serves. Please visit electburkhardt.com for more information or to join my campaign. Are you better off than you were four years ago? My name is Kevin Burkhardt. I hope to earn your vote for reelection. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burkhardt. Two-year candidate, Ms. Churchill, please summarize your positions, and statewide residents should vote for you on Tuesday, November 3rd. You have two minutes.
Well, I feel like I'm the best candidate for this position because I've been working with the city council for the past four years. I've consistently attended all of the city council meetings and work sessions for the past four years as part of my... past four years as part of my position on the Community Engagement Committee. So I feel like I have an idea of what's going on in city council right now. I really like the way things are going. I want to continue that. I think that we all are working for a better Prior Lake, and that's what I'd like to continue doing. I'm a pragmatist, and I will work to get things done as I best can and as it works well for our city. One of the things that hasn't been addressed that I am very passionate about is housing, housing for real people, like police officers and teachers. Right now, all of the new housing that's going up in Prior Lake is very high-end. Our first-year police officers and first-year teachers can't afford to buy a new house in Prior Lake. And I think that's one thing that hasn't been addressed yet that I would like to see addressed in the future council. Again, I feel like I'm the best candidate, and I would like to be able to work with this council for the next two years. I love the city, and I want to make it a better place. Thank you. I would appreciate your vote on November 3rd. My website is kimforcouncil.net, and my birthday is November 4th, so I'd love to have a great birthday present. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Churchill. Two-year candidate, Mr. Cronquist, please summarize your positions. And statewide residents should vote for you on Tuesday, November 3rd. You have two minutes.
Thank you. After listening to my answers and sometimes not answers over the past hour and a half, you can clearly see I'm not your average politician. I'm just a person who's worked hard and also a person who believes in limited government. Moving here from Southern California, from all those years in the Navy, I've seen what happens when government gets too big or the people aren't actually there to interact and say, we want this, not this. And not that I'm saying that the city council or the mayor is doing that now. I would just hate to see us go in that direction. I want to provide that little bit of common sense, hey, are we going in the right way? I'm not a businessman. I don't own a business. But as a council member, I don't think I need to. What I need to do is something I learned in the military. You don't have to know everything. You just have to know where to go to find an answer. And I truly believe that. My name is Dan Cronquist. Elect me on the 3rd or find somebody better. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Cronquist. We'll now move to on Zoom, our four-year candidate, Mr. Fredrickson. Please summarize your positions and why residents should vote for you on Tuesday, November 3rd. You have two minutes.
Your closing statements, two minutes.
First off, I just want to thank everyone for having me and being patient with the technology issue. Sorry that it's kind of messy with the voice. Thank you specifically, Councilman Burkhart, for your help, calling me specifically so that people can hear my responses. So I appreciate that. First, I guess I would say you should vote for me because I truly want to represent you, the people, and be your voice and hear your perspective. Those voices and those perspectives will inform how I make those decisions for our city and that you will feel represented by electing me. I promise that I will ask the tough questions. I mentioned one of the things that I would ask, for example, in the fiscal example, is are we willing to cut? What can we cut? What can we remove? How can we rethink this? Ask those questions opposed to just adding to our existing debt or budget. I will fight to make sure that we live within our means. Again, we as people are expected to do that. As everyday citizens, our government should also be expected to do that. And I will fight to ensure that we do. I will support our first responders. Unlike other cities, in Minneapolis, for example, where there is movements to defund the police, I will fully support our police, our first responders. With a vote for me, that will never be an issue. We will not defund the police.
Thirty seconds.
I support local businesses, and I will work with you to figure out the best solutions for the community and your business. Finally, I'll be accountable and transparent with you. I know we've made good progress, but I will continue to do that. You can learn more about me at electkylefred.com. And again, I just want to thank you for your time tonight and being patient with me, and I hope to have earned your vote November 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fredrickson. Two-year candidate, Mr. Hacklander, please summarize your positions. And statewide residents should vote for you on Tuesday, November 3rd. You have two minutes.
We live in a wonderful city. We face a lot of challenges beyond the ordinary, balancing budgets and dealing with taxes and figuring out how to best improve the services for our residents. But we also have a lot of opportunities. And I think it's important for the city to continue to move forward with the kind of reasonable, sustainable growth that we've been able to see for the last few years. I think it's important to continue to grow and improve on our downtown and continue to make it vibrant and to continue to enhance that small-town feel. After all, success begets success. And I think that the more outside businesses or people thinking about coming here or developers, the more they view this city, the more they view it as a place to come and the place that they want to invest. And as we improve our tax base, that brings our costs down for everybody because it spreads it across the board, and we can provide even better services for all of our residents. If I'm elected, what you will get is somebody who will work incredibly hard. A lot of the people in this room and a lot of people sitting up here on the dais know me, and they know how hard I work, and they know that I do my homework. I will encourage more transparency, discussions, and I will listen. We face difficult challenges with the pandemic, which is going to go well into 2021. But with these challenges, we're presented with opportunities. I'm excited about our future and about moving forward. I look forward to your support and to meeting more of you as we move forward. I look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hacklander. This concludes our city council candidate forum. I want to thank the city of Prior Lake, Dave, all the candidates, the Prior Lake Chamber of Commerce, all the attendees, and the viewers. The candidate forum has been broadcast live on the Local Government Access Channel and will be rebroadcast daily until the election. The city will also have the video available online on its website until the election. Don't forget to vote on Tuesday, November 3rd. Thank you, everyone, and a huge thank you to Dave Albon for running all the cameras and videos. Have a nice evening.[1727.33][1727.33]